Well, on this fine summer day in June, I'm going to call the Independent School District's School Board Meeting Together, District 283, Monday, June 24th. Happy to all be here, happy to have everybody here. We're going to see, this is the call to order. First up, we have approval of the agenda. On the agenda today, we have open forum, we have a superintendent's report, we have discussion items, construction project presentation, Children's First Annual Update, Community Education Early Learning Program, Fiscal '20 Budget Discussion, Career Pathway Advisory Board Presentation, and a Policy Development Second Reading of Policy 912 Adult Education Program. We have a consent agenda, and then our action agenda starts with the 2019 A L T F M bond sale, then the 2019 Election Duties Resolution, and some talk about upcoming election openings on the school board. Filing dates, encouragement to think about running and run, that's all happening as part of the action agenda. Then we have the Fiscal Year '20 Budget Approval, and then we have the General Accounting Standards Board GAZV 84 Student Activity Accounting, followed by the Minnesota State High School League Resolution for 2019-2020, Policy Development Second Reading of Policy 912 Adult Education Program, Communications and Transmittals, followed by Adjournment. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Karen, is there a second? Seconded by Ann, all in favor?
Aye.
Carrie 7-0. First up, open forum, is there anybody here who would like to? Six-oh. Two-oh. Is there anybody here who would like to speak at open forum? All right, we may get out earlier. Moving on, we are up for the superintendent's report.
All right. Good evening Chair Gor, members of the board. This evening for my report, I have two items that I would like to share with you. On Saturday, June 5th, I had an opportunity to participate in Parktacular Parade with Director Casey Totalevich, Chair Gor, Director Vinnicki, and Director Morrison, who's not here this evening. And we had a tremendous time engaging community members, handing out fancy number-two pencils to all of the students and community members that were at the event. The weather held off, and it was a great event. So, thank you for all of those that were out that day and were able to participate in the parade. And my second item is a bittersweet item, and I know that Karen Atkinson will be sharing later on, providing a Children's First update, and I know the school board at that time will take a moment to acknowledge Karen for all of her contribution to the St. Louis Park Public School District. But I just wanted to take a moment and thank Karen for her 25 years of service here in St. Louis Park Public Schools. I've only been here a short period of time, but from the moment that I started, I think Karen was maybe one of the first people that I met with, and you know, within that first meeting had already explained to me what Children's First was, and the impact that has had on this community for the past 25 years. So, I just want to thank you for your leadership and your commitment to the students and families of St. Louis Park Public Schools and just the greater city of St. Louis Park, and your leadership will greatly be missed, and we're looking forward to, you know, being that you're not far away, looking forward to still having you in the future. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Next up, we have the discussion, excuse me, discussion items, and we're going to start with the construction project presentation by Tom Maravol, our Facilities Manager.
Thank you Chair Gor, Superintendent Osai, and school board members. Just wanted to kind of give you an update of where we are. If you haven't noticed, a lot of construction is going on, and a lot of things at most of all the sites, and I just want to kind of share it through, give you some pictures and outlines of what's going on here. So, the first one is going to be the high school. We have, of course, the new administration for the principals, counselors, principals, SROs, and so forth. It's our old district office space that's on track, and everything's going real well. What you see in the pictures there is the canopy is going to be going down, or it has gone down already. The new entryway, which you are going to be very impressed because the hallways are going to link from the second floor to the first floor, and you may say, "How is that going to work?" I was there the other day, and it does, it's magnificent, because there's such wide hallways, and it shows how the link by the stairs, you're going to see both of them. So, students will be able to flow better where they are because the entryway will be there. This project was designed, and I have it on the top corner so that you know, was designed by Cunningham Architects and so forth, and they're the ones that are with me at all the meetings. We have countless meetings to get to this point, and we're very excited. This project itself would be done, will be done sometime in August, along with the locker room project at the high school. The weight room project won't be done until January, of course, because that just started. If you've seen it, all the footings are in, and the structure still is going to be going up very soon. Next one is, of course, again, back at the high school. It's the locker room project. What you're seeing in the picture there is the new hallway that's going to be linking to Dakota foyer right now, to the hallway where people are well-known as the McDonald exit, you know? So, that one, it's going to have a flow now, so that it's going to be a lot better. It's all going to be well-lit, kids won't have to go all the way around, they can go through that new hallway to the other side of the building with activity centers and so forth. So, the project itself is again slated to be completed sometime in August, and we're very excited about it. It's going to be done. 292 Design was the one that designed the locker room and renovations of that project. The third one at the high school is tennis courts. You haven't seen the big hole outside. We had to remove quite a bit of dirt because of the fact that it was dirt that didn't fare well for what was underneath the tennis court that should have been there. So, we are on track again for this one. We've been told a lot by Andy Ewald that the tennis team will start on August 12th here, and that's what we're shooting for is August 12th, is that they will be done. So, we're moving along there. We always look every day at the weather, because that, this project itself, it really is dependent upon the weather it's being completed. But right now, we're on schedule. And then we have the Fitness Center addition. As you can see, again, out there, the footings are in. We're very excited that getting things rolling here. The old weight room, on the one slide, that used to be the weight room, and now it's all gutted out. It went pretty fast. The weight room is temporarily located in the part of the gym, the main gym, and it's working out very well. Talked to the teachers and staff, and I know Scott's in the audience here, very pleased about how we moved that transition. So, nothing was stopped, the summer programs for weightlifting and things like that kept on going, and we had no interruptions. We're very happy about that. And then Cunningham Group is the ones that designed, of course, the fitness center and the Park Spanish Immersion. That project itself is about now 70% done. The parking lot, as you can see there, we widened the parking lot now, and we have the first layer of the pavement down. On the other slide, you can just kind of see that that's the new addition that we're putting in, in the kitchen area. So, we're moving along in that project, and we're getting things rolling. We are going to try to set up tours for the school board and so forth, because we'd love to show, share that with you before the chaos starts at the end of August. But that project is again slated to be done around the second week in August, and Cory was here, he was just, he's smiling for me every year because a lot of the rooms are already done in that classroom, so we're excited. And that project was designed by Cunningham Group again.
Tom, if I can just stop you for a second?
Yes.
As part of the move from PSI, that's central to PSI at Cedar Manor, they've all been packing up and moving out and doing all of their, the teachers, and with a lot of help from the hiring company. My side story is that things are found in the process of making a move, and I have seen posted on the PSI alumni Facebook page, some lovely pictures of our graduates who are now 27, back in the day when they were in third or fourth grade, getting their birthday celebration hats, and then apparently our principal, Corey Mozowsky at the time, is also in one of those photos, and as everybody noted, he was younger then than his students are now.
Wow.
So, moving can help you find some true treasures.
Yep, and you know, one of the things that I think you may or may not know, because of the fact that, you know, it's a full renovation, and we had some looks, we are going to be put in a time capsule at PSI. We don't know what we're putting in there yet, I've talked to Cory, and we haven't talked to the superintendent yet, but we want to know what we could put in that time capsule. This one, again, started right when we needed it to start, the day after everybody was gone. Most of the rooms are gutted out, believe it or not. We are moving along really well. The abatement process is all done, we're very happy about that, and the project is slated to, again, be done, this one, all the way almost to the end of August, but we're shooting for, again, August 23rd. With this project, it was designed by ATS and R, and it also includes the kitchen remodeling, which I don't have a picture of that one, but the kitchen will also be remodeled. So, that'll be one of the first kitchens, along with PSI, that will be prepared for the scratch cooking in the future when the middle school and high school kitchens are done. Oh, and that's it. Any questions?
No questions, thanks Tom. I saw the rain falling on the tennis courts under construction as I was coming in, so hopefully that won't slow them down too much.
Yeah, hopefully tomorrow will be sunny. Thank you.
Next up, we have the Children's First Annual Update. Karen Atkinson, Executive Director of Children's First for 25 years, will do the presentation. Thank you Karen.
Great, thank you Chair Gor, council members, and Mr. Osai for having Children's First for the annual update. Just for a little bit of background, I know you are all very aware of this, because all of our school board members have been trained as champions, so thank you for that. But the vision of Children's First, we envision a future where all children and teens in St. Louis Park have adult support to help them thrive. And our mission as an organization is to engage adults in St. Louis Park to actively support in the growth of all of our youth. So, we did some strategic planning, I think it was almost two years ago, and we had a big goal, number one. And this year, under the leadership of our Chair Mary Wagner, the Executive Committee decided to step back from that a little bit. So, the goal is that St. Louis Park residents will recognize Children's First as an integral part of the culture of the community, and I guess the goal isn't so much changed, but the outcome. By 2022, in the past, it said four out of five residents, and now we're saying that a majority of adults who live in St. Louis Park will recognize Children's First as an initiative where adults help support the development of our kids. They felt that was a little more realistic, and also have steps behind it as how they can measure it. So, you'll be seeing more with that moving forward. Really, this year, it's fun that Early Child is here, because we did a lot of work with them. We went in and worked with the staff, Mary Javarian, and I worked with the community ed staff, giving them, thinking about what does Children's First have to do with building assets in our youngest citizens? And we really felt like, when we start with the youngest families, that carries us through until they're older. So, we worked with the staff there, we were at the vehicle fair this year, last week we were at the St. Louis Park Fire Department Open House, so really looking at how do we reach out to our youngest families. That was a big focus this year. Then we have a couple events. The Champions Breakfast was in March, and it was a record-breaking year. We raised $100,000 this year, which was just amazing. And what's really fun is we're featuring grads at our breakfast. So, this is Joel and Olivia Liz Fontz, they actually were high school sweethearts, they're married. If you were at the breakfast, their child was in the audience, he was six months old, Alejandro, and they talked about the support that they got in the community growing up. Joel was a GATE scholar, so he really got a lot of support here at the high school and through College Possible. And Olivia shared the story about being a barista at Caribou, and how her customers supported her and cheered her on as she went through high school and college. We also had a young man, Mateo Gonzalez, who did a spoken word. Three high school students created a video, and appearing in that video were some of our elementary kids who live at Wayside Supportive Housing. So, it was really fun to be able to celebrate some of the young people here and that have grown up here. And we had 35 tablehouse, we were totally booked, that room was packed. I know a lot of people were there, and people are always saying, "The room's so packed, what do we do?" And like, if that's the worst problem that we have, we'll take that, so. And then the other one was the 26th Annual Children's First Ice Cream Social. Yes, it was cold. It was cold. I don't think it got above 40 degrees, but we still serve 1,600 ice cream cones. So, it really is something that families come out to. It's a free day over at The Rock. I think this year, they came out, but they didn't stay quite as long as they have in past years, so. And then we have some leadership changes. So, Mary Wagner is a family practice doctor for Park Nicollet Creekside Clinic. She's served a two-year term as chair. And what is just wonderful about Mary is she is really into systems and organizing, and that has played really well to what we've been doing this year. And our new chair, who starts July 1st, is Larissa Reed. So, when someone becomes chair, they commit to a year, and then they can up a second year, so she's, excuse me, committed to a year. Larissa went to high school here, and when she was 15, she was a youth co-chair of Children's First. So, over half of her life, she's been involved in Children's First, and I'm really excited for her to take the helm. As the Executive Committee does some more visioning and planning, I think that speaks really well to her strengths. And then, as you mentioned, here I was 25 years ago, the announcement, so it's true, I've been around 25 years, the announcement when I came here was in the printed staff newsletter, and of course, the announcement as I'm leaving has all been done online or in person, but not so much in print. So, you know, it's just been an honor and a privilege to have this position. What a super fun job, great support from the school board, from the city council, from people all over this community. So, I just want to thank you for your support, and that's really all I have to say. So, I don't know if you have any questions? I'm going to take this photo off.
So, Karen, I have a lot of fond memories of working with you, and my emails to Karen A. from Karen W., and I really appreciated how you did my champion training personally, because my schedule was so weird, I couldn't get to an official session, so you just said, "Take me out to coffee and we'll do it." And you did, and it was very thorough and extensive. And then, the thing I struggled with was the 40 assets. There's a lot to pay attention to, but when we grouped them into relationship, experiences, and expectations, I got it, and I could do it. And that is something that I'm really grateful to you, your leadership over the years, so that we can do the good things for the children in our schools, in our neighborhoods, add activities, because it makes a difference. So, thank you.
Great, thanks Karen.
So, Karen, do you know off the top of your head when Children's First was founded, or when it began?
Well, it actually began on March 12th, 1992, with a speech to the Rotary Club.
Have you been the Executive Director then the entire time? I'm not doing my math, but I have all but two years.
I was hired in 94, so there was no paid staff, so I'm the only person that has ever worked for Children's First.
So, that's kind of where I was going with this then, is I have only been a St. Louis Park resident, I've only been a Minnesotan for almost 11 years, and I quickly came to learn that St. Louis Park and Children's First go hand-in-hand. The comment that this is a Children's First community, it took me a little bit to figure out what everybody was talking about when they said that, but I figured it out pretty quickly, and that is you. You take, you know, you can take a whole lot of responsibility, or a lot of pride and ownership in the fact that, when you think of Children's First, think of all of your work, and everything that you have done over the past 25 years to make this community something that we can all be really proud to raise our kids in. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
In the interest of Children's First, I might need to take my child downstairs shortly to her mother, but before I do that, I want to thank you for all the time and effort that you've put forth, and I mean, what I think I'll remember most probably is part of the breakfast, and not the food part of it, but just the speeches, I don't know, I remember, I forget his name, maybe Van?
Van Hahn.
Who was talking about being a soccer coach, and that was a great, with my daughter with her soccer gear on, I didn't really, you know, so, but like, just hearing how his coach did it for him, and then he realized that he was doing it for others. So, I just, I'm really appreciative of everything you've done for the community, and every time I think of you, I think of those stories, you know, so, thank you.
Thanks Joe. Yes, please do, Children's First. Thanks for sitting through that.
These guys have already said such lovely things, and I'm never as eloquent as they are, but, but something that has helped me be more, have more language about what our mission is and what we do is Children's First and the assets in particular. It's always, to me, it's always been a place to come back to, like, what is our goal here? What do I want to say about this? What is some language I can use on those assets? There's always one, there's always one that applies, so that is something that, and I love that Joe said what he would remember, I mean, I'm certainly going to remember cold ice creams coming, but, but that, because I think we've had two cold years in a couple, in a couple years, but that is just a testament to what this is in our community. I could not believe, when I showed up this year, I was like, "Oh, there's not going to be that many people here." And we had a line of 20 or 20, I mean, I was on Oreo, which is very popular, but we had a long line for Oreo, and we were scooping very quickly, Brad, Mark, and I. So, that is such a testament to what this represents for our community, and again, like Mary said, that's your work. So, thank you. I mean, really, thank you on behalf of the entire community, because, and not just us, I mean, you know, thank you on behalf of everyone.
Thank you for scooping. It was a cold year. I think Aston will tell you it was very cold.
I would just like to add my thanks to all you've done. I always think about that what we do here sort of built on the principles of Children's First, and I appreciate all you've done. I think you might have done my personal training too with me at one time, and I appreciate that. Lots of fond memories, like, and getting frostbites during ice cream.
Yeah, you too. Thanks Jim.
Yeah Karen, what a delight it has been over the last 25 years, your attitude, your joy, your genuine appreciation and love of all of our students and all of our children in the community. I just think we all feel it, and we're all so grateful. I hope whatever you're doing next is also as joyful for you as your years have been for us. When I see the adults in my neighborhood greeting the kids on our block, saying hi at the bus stops, you know, caring about them, and that way, I know that's part of your work and our work together as part of making Children's First, and making kids know that they're seen, they're cared about, and they're appreciated. So, I just really thank you so much. I'm going to read, we're going to come up in a minute, and I'm going to give you, you know, something for your wall, or your mantle, or whatever you want to do with it, but I want to read it to you. It says, "St. Louis Park Public Schools recognizes Karen Atkinson for 25 years of service to the district. It is with deep appreciation that we recognize your dedication and hard work over the course of your distinguished career. Thank you for your outstanding service to the district and the students of St. Louis Park Public Schools."
Great.
This is a special spot, in case you haven't been here before. This is yours, so I'm not doing that. I hope that Sarah approves of that. Now, that's a vice chair stepping up. All right, next up is the Community Education Early Learning Program. And I would, and I'll let every presenter introduce themselves. How is that? Thanks.
Good evening Chair Gor, Superintendent Osai, and members of the board. I'm Kim Rosald, I am a teacher on special assignment, working as the Kids Place Preschool Education Coordinator.
I'm Lisa Pro, I'm back, this time talking about the preschool portion of Kids Place. I'm the program manager.
My name's Britt Albrecht, I'm an early childhood special ed teacher, and I also supervise our Early Learning Threes program.
And I'm Louise Rath, I'm a special education supervisor for the school district, and one of my roles is to provide support to children and families who receive special education services. Those ECSE services are embedded within our Early Learning Program. And speaking for all of us, we are delighted to be here to talk about our work with lovely young children and their families. We have been on a journey, a really transformational journey, and we're proud of our accomplishments, and we're proud of what our staff has done. Seven years ago, we were a siloed program for children ages three to five alone. We had nine different program options. Those programs kind of operated independent of one another and followed their own paths to kindergarten readiness. This was really confusing for families, and it was also really inefficient. We have changed. Seven years ago, we came together with a large group of folks, early childhood teachers, early childhood administrators, parents, kindergarten teachers, district representatives, some folks from the University of Minnesota, there were 23 of us that met, and we developed a strategic plan, six pages in length. The plan identified two primary goals, one focusing on enhancing children's development, one focusing on our partnership with parents, and wove into that work equity. We then developed a core team, which was made up of, and it's in practice today, special ed, early childhood teachers, leaders, special ed teacher leaders and administrators, and then we had a number of action teams. And we have been working hard. So, fast forward to today. If you are a parent of a three-year-old, your decision's pretty straightforward. You register your child for a class for threes, you're going to decide if you want to have one day a week, three days a week, four days a week, full days or half days. Regardless of the classroom you choose, your child will have the exact same assessments, will be exposed and experience the same curriculum. All classrooms follow the same path, the same level of rigor preparing kids for kindergarten. And we're proud of getting to that point. So, that leads us to where we are now. Our plan has evolved over the last seven years. No, it's fine. We've embedded, we kept on, we held on to our mission and our vision, we embedded our school improvement plan, and we have an equity statement. Equity continues to be an integral part of our work, we're continuing to focus on enhancing children's learning and partnering with parents. We're doing really good work, and we're really proud of our staff. So, now we're going to talk a little bit about what we're doing in the programs that we're providing.
Okay, first, we have a number for you. So, early childhood, of course, as Louise said, is a family's first opportunity to connect with the St. Louis Park School District. This year, an ECFE Infant and Toddler Intervention Services, Early Childhood Special Education, Kids Place, and Early Learning Together served, are you ready? 921 families and children. I think that's the biggest we've ever been. So, just so you know, this picture is of all the Kids Place children who are entering into kindergarten this fall. Earlier in May, they got to visit their respective kindergarten buildings and have a visit. Earlier in May, they got to visit their respective kindergarten buildings and have a visit.
So, we're going to start off by just talking about our options that we have for our children that are birth to three years old. Some of you might be familiar with ECFE, our Early Childhood Family Education Program. It's a program that gives families an opportunity to come together with their child. We offer both separating and non-separating classes, depending on the age of the child. And we know that parents or primary caregivers are the most important educator in their child's life, but this program affords them the opportunity to learn more skills so that they can create an even better environment in their home to provide that for their children, a learning, for their learning and their development. We also have a small program, but it's called HUG, Helping Us Grow, and it's where a parent educator goes into the home of a new family with a new infant. They bring resources to that family about child development, resources about things they can find in our community, and more importantly, we encourage families to become familiar with what we have here in our St. Louis Park School System.
A third component of our birth to three program is infant toddler intervention services, and those are services that are provided to children and parents, children who have special education needs and parents. And those services are primarily provided within the family's home. While our infant toddler intervention staff sees both the parent and the child, it is really the parent that is the primary recipient of the service. They are partnering with parents to enhance the parent's skills, ability, knowledge, to help them help their children grow and develop. Our infant toddler team has served children, families prior to the child's birth. We've had a number of occasions where a family has known that they were going to have a child with a disability, and we've met in their homes with them prior to the birth of their child. We, we receive many, many referrals right from the NICU, teeny, teeny babies, one pound, two pounds being born, and we're meeting with families when those babies are two weeks Primarily, services are provided at home. We engage in something called family-guided routines-based intervention. We, when children are the age of two, they're really getting old for infant toddler intervention services, and we afford the families the opportunity to have the children come in with mommy or daddy or grandma to a blended early childhood parent education classroom where they learn alongside typically developing children and their parents. One of the things that I think is really remarkable about our program is our commitment to inclusion. It happens early on and throughout our whole program.
Once children are 33 months, they are preschoolers. People ask me about that a lot, and that is the Minnesota Department of Human Services role, so that's why we always say 33 months. So, just like the school-age part of Kids Place, the preschool program is open Monday through Friday, 6:30 a.m. until 6 o'clock p.m., year-round. We provide extended-day preschool programming for working families, and we're, again, the largest provider of preschool childcare in St. Louis Park. We serve children ages 33 months until kindergarten. Children are sometimes sick when they stay with us, and that's fine. That's a parent decision. We serve typically developing children as well as children with special needs. We currently have classrooms at Central and Lenox Community Centers. We've earned accreditation through NACY, the National Association for the Education of Young Children, which is seen as a mark of high quality in early childhood programs. Kids Place, as well as all the eligible preschool programs in our early learning program, has earned a four-star ParentAware rating. ParentAware is Minnesota's quality rating and improvement system, and four stars is the highest possible rating. Kids Place preschool is currently serving 183 preschoolers. Of those, 102 will go to kindergarten in the fall, and of that group, 77 will stay in St. Louis Park Public Schools. And then to best, one program highlight, to best meet the needs of the children that are going to kindergarten, we created a number of years ago, actually at parent request, we reserve three classrooms. They're set aside for children who will attend kindergarten the following fall. So, the children in those classrooms have to be four by September 1st, and we call that YVK, Year Before Kindergarten. Super clever. So, those, those YVCA's aren't just receiving instructions such a way that you'd expect for children who are going to kindergarten the next year. Because it's sort of a whole-family thing, we kind of move children from this preschool world to a school-age world throughout the year. So, you know, they're going from, you know, taking naps in the afternoon, transitioning out of naptime and being awake for the whole day. They're, you know, visiting with school helpers, so they meet the custodians and the principals, and they're just familiar with the school building. They eat in the cafeteria, you know, with the big kids, which they are delighted with. But the cafeterias are, they're different than in a classroom. It's noisy, so then they're exposed to that, and they're used to that on the first day of school. So, and of course, we go on field trips, they get to ride the bus, which is a big hit, and as Kim said, they visit the classrooms ahead of time the year before, during the school day, which is just kind of a different thing when children are in the building. And we just want for them to go into the first day of kindergarten, you know, feeling confident, like I know this, I've seen this, I know what to do, and I already have friends here, like I belong here, so.
So, early learning is very similar to Kids Place in that we offer the same curriculums and assessments and such. They offer half-day programming, both morning and afternoon, and they're two to five days a week, located at Central. They serve 204 preschoolers this year. Very similar, so they have a younger child's preschool classroom, and then they have a year-before kindergarten and preschool classroom called Early Learning Force. So, that program is also four-star ParentAware rated. It's completely integrated with early childhood special education. In fact, the classes are co-taught, so there's an early line, or learning teacher, and then an early childhood special ed teacher, or an early childhood special ed parent in the class every day. And scholarships and transportation are available in early learning half-day programming for the families that qualify.
So, just to add a little bit to the description of the early learning program, I want to highlight the fact that early childhood special education services are embedded within the early learning classrooms. This is really, really a unique thing, and it's something we, as a school district, are very proud of. Many school districts have self-contained programs for young children with special education needs that have more significant needs. We don't do that in St. Louis Park. Regardless of what your skills and abilities are, you are afforded the opportunity to learn alongside your typically developing peers. And this is research-based. Peers are the best teachers ever. And so, we have got an array of different models that we implement, but children are learning together and growing, which really prepares them for kindergarten.
Okay. Sometimes you just need a little side story, right? So, I've been teaching for 17 years in the district, and this family, these, this family is the Mitchell family, and I have taught all four of their children over the years, some of them for one year, some of them for two years. And I'm just going to name them from left to right. So, we have Kevin, who is the dad. We have Jaden, he'll be entering the high school in the fall. And then just to my right, that's Jamison, he's entering kindergarten. He's the youngest, so he's going to be the last in our program as far as I know. And then we have Coco and Julian, and then Dani is the mom. And so, I have just gotten to know this family for so many years, and they've been very involved in their children's lives, and they really appreciate what we do here in St. Louis Park. And I'm just going to read, I asked Dani what, what would she say was the, you know, one of the benefits or the biggest benefit for her family? And I'm just going to read what she sent me, because I was, I was really surprised by how much she said. It was very sweet. She said, "I think the biggest thing was the confidence you guys gave the kids going into kindergarten, really nurtured them and gave them a safe place to learn and grow, also helping us decide on kindergarten readiness socially and academically. You really helped to bring them all out of their shell." Coco, of course, was out of hers already, ha-ha. "I really appreciate the way they were prepared, and I always feel better with them heading off to all-day school knowing that." And I just thought it was a real nice testimony to our program. And it also reminds me to remind all of you that we often think of kindergarten as a child's first school experience, but it goes way before that in our early childhood department. So, thank you.
Oops, I went ahead. All right. So, I'm going to talk about early childhood screening. Early childhood screening is required by the state of Minnesota for every child entering into kindergarten. One of our initiatives have been to screen children at three years old, so if necessary, families can be connected to early childhood special ed services and/or medical services, referral services, so that they can have the best leg up before they enter into kindergarten. And strong relationships with our families are, of course, very paramount in early childhood education. We sustain, or we engage, sustain and deepen relationships through home visits, through parent groups, through conferences, through regular communication, and that is emails, texts, pickup and drop-off. Family intervention, or family interactions, events like this photo, this is grandparents' Day, so that was really fun. Advisory council and community events such as the vehicle fair, which was mentioned earlier in the family first, children first. And we know that once we've developed these strong relationships with our children and our families, they carry that over into the elementary buildings that they are going into.
So, an additional area that we provide support is mental health, and this is relatively new for us. Two years ago, we received a grant from the Family Service Collaborative, as well as from our advisory council, and we are able to employ a social worker. And she is partnering with parents and staff in helping to address some mental health needs in our youngest learners. She also is providing some professional development for our staff, and she's connecting families with outside resources.
So, I've been in the school district since 1996. I started as an ECFE teacher, parent educator. I moved on to family, half-day preschool programming, early learning. It was called something different then, but the reason I was brought in as a teacher leader to Kids Place was to help support and guide them into our, our collaborative work. So, I'm going to tell you a little bit about our curriculums and our assessments. So, our main curriculum is Big Day for Pre-K. It is literacy, math, science-based, is eight monthly themes, and we chose that curriculum because we thought it closely aligned with kindergarten's IB monthly planners. We also have Second Steps, that's what the picture is. Second Steps is our social-emotional curriculum. It's a weekly themed curriculum that works on everything from how to calm your body to how to join a group, how to pay attention in circle time, how to solve a problem, how to ask for help. All these things are done with puppets, and the kids don't even see the teachers. All they see are these puppets. They think it's the best thing ever. And then we also have a handwriting without tiers curriculum, and we like it because it's multi-sensory, and it also teaches handwriting order with the easiest thing to draw, which is the letter L. Big line down, little line across. So, it doesn't teach it in an A-B-C order. It teaches it in the order it's easiest for a child to draw. So, our assessments for three-year-olds, we have a social-emotional screen, we have early childhood indicators and pathways, and we also correlate stuff with the Minnesota early childhood indicators of progress. Once they turn four, and they're four by September 1st, we also add in individual growth and development indicators. That's ADEs for short. It was developed by the University of Minnesota close to 30 years ago. It's one of the best indicators of how well a child will read in third grade. We also chose it because, like kindergarten's FAST literacy assessment, it scores the children red, yellow, green. So, the five sub-tests in the ADEs are picture naming, rhyming, alliteration, which one doesn't belong, and sound ID. Along with all those assessments, our early childhood special ed students also are assessed with the A-E-P-S assessment. One of the great things about our assessments this year is I worked with Olivia Talzin, and we got the social-emotional screen and the ADE scores to every, for every child going into kindergarten to those kindergartens in the spring this year. So, we were super excited about that collaboration and that bridging with kindergarten. All right. Early childhood professional development. We participate in district-wide PD. We have joint and specific PD, and we also attend monthly racial equity professional development. And if that isn't enough, early childhood also has enrichment programs such as gymnastics, gym, and aquatics. So, how does that all work? How do we fund all this? You get to hear from Lisa.
And I'm just going to crisp this up. We have numerous sources, and our funding is co-mangled. Looking forward to, ahead for us, we are working really hard and excited about the opening of a new early learning center in the fall of 2020. That's exciting, and we also look forward to continuing to serve the children and families in our community. We recognize the responsibility and privilege of working with our youngest learners, and we take that responsibility very seriously and know that they are our starting point. Thank you for offering us the opportunity to talk with you tonight. Do you have any questions?
This is so exciting. Who remembers that I was on that 2012 committee? This is, I mean, it's amazing to see how far it has come. I know. No, I know. So, my, as we say a lot of times, like, you know, many of our students in St. Louis Park, their first introduction to St. Louis Park Public Schools is through early learning programs, and mine, that was ours. We moved here when my son was just about 33 months, whoever said 33 months, two and a half kindergarten, free-to-play, was our first experience in St. Louis Park Public Schools. And in 2012, I served on that, on that very first visioning of how can we take all these silos and put them into something that makes sense and is aligned? And it's just, it's incredible to see, to see where it is, and it's going to be amazing in the new, in the new space. So, I'm just, I'm super, I'm just thrilled and excited that you're here. And I, and I don't think that my, that my experience is, is just mine. I think there are a lot of parents who are in this community who really treasure and value the experiences that their kids had in, in the early learning programs and, and the entree that that gave them to this district. So, I have, I have a question. It's not a huge question, but it's, it's about the, it's amazing that the test scores going to the kindergarten teacher. So, is there, is there a mechanism kind of for feedback from kindergarten back to early learning?
Okay. You want to answer? I just want to say there's been a couple of things that we've done, and just for, for all of you, one of the sub-goals that we had was enhancing the alignment between early childhood and kindergarten, and there were a number of items underneath that. So, we've had multiple times that we've met with kindergarten teachers over the year. What's important to you? What should we value? This past year, we had a grant where we created triads, ECSE teacher, early childhood teacher, and a kindergarten teacher. The early childhood educators observed in kindergarten classrooms during September and October. Kindergarten teachers came over and observed in our classrooms in April and May. In the middle of the year, we brought parents in and had a dinner, and kindergarten teachers and some of our early childhood educators gave information about what parents can do in their homes to help get their children ready for, for kindergarten. But it was really a dynamic conversation when we had our breakfast meeting, bringing all of these folks, early childhood educators and the kindergarten teachers, together to talk about, how does this inform our practices? How do we want to make some changes as we work more closely together? So, there's an example of one of the things that we've done. Yeah.
Well, I just want to add to that a little bit.
all of these folks, early childhood educators and the kindergarten teachers, together to talk about, how does this inform our practices? How do we want to make some changes as we work more closely together? So there's an example of one of the things that we've done.
Well, I just want to add to that a little bit. So what was new this year, we've always sent over the ADE scores in the fall. So they got them in the fall. This year, Olivia and I talked about the social-emotional screen. Did we have anything available for them in the spring to help balance classrooms a little better? And so we did already have something in place, we just added it to it and provided it in the spring instead of in the fall.
I'd like to say I remember refining this. My ECFE classes with my three kids, a lot of them were with Kim, so Kim and I go way back. Can you say more about that four-star rating? Is that the one that's actually fairly rare to get, or how do you get that?
You have, it meets curriculum, professional development, it's an application process, and then you provide documentations about staff qualifications, and then the state makes a determination. And the criteria is actually on the Parent Aware website, very clearly laid out. It is, it is hard for some programs to achieve that, for sure. We are lucky to have what we need here in the school district to be able to meet the
Well, I would like to thank all of you. Kim was one of my ECFE teachers too, 23 years ago. And then I do remember the process of moving toward integration because Louise, you hosted a very informal pizza focus group that I got to participate in. And then you also had me help with something related to integrating early childhood special ed, because you're right, it all had been siloed. And the thing that I'm so impressed about is the dedication of all of you to do the work well. We didn't do it in a hurry. We took care of all of the details so that our kids and our staff and our families didn't experience anything different beyond, oh, this is the name of the class I picked now. And, and it all works together. So thank you so much for your care in making this huge process change, because it was a ton of work.
Wonderful enthusiastic presentation. I just thank you for sharing that. The visioning plan that you gathered folks together for 2012, our district strategic plan is a five-year plan, 2015 to 2020. Is the strategic plan or the visioning plan that you have, is that coming up for renewal or is that ongoing? Or how are you contemplating that kind of examination or not?
In year six, we did a revision, and that's when we incorporated the school improvement plan, because there were a couple of years that we had both our strategic plan and our school improvement plan, and that did not make sense to have two plans guiding us. So we went through a revision process, so.
Perfect. And then I just want to remind any viewers at home that the new early learning center that we're talking about is part of what's happening at Central. As part of the referendum that this community has generously passed, $100.9 million, I've learned how to say that big number. Central's going to have an opportunity to sort of have its guts reworked so it can last a lot longer than we were projecting it to, and part of that remodel is going to include the early childhood learning center in what had formerly been PSI, that side of the building. And it's going to be kind of right-sized and right-fit and hopefully right-on for our early learning childhood program. And I'm really excited about what you're doing now and the fact that we're going to be able to upgrade the facilities so it fits more appropriately for little bodies. Thank you so much. So next up, we have the fiscal '20 budget discussion led by Patricia Magnuson, Director of Business Services.
Good evening, Chair Gorres, Superintendent O'Sai, School Board members. Tonight's presentation is really just a recap of what we talked about on June 10th to review our recommended budget for fiscal year '20 in preparation for action later tonight. I want to just remind the board of the budget, the big budget assumptions, that we're a part of building this budget, an increase in the funding formula of 2%. Our enrollment of 352 students at kindergarten and a total of 4,555 K-12 students. We're using the same class size guidelines that were in place for this fiscal year. We've done some increases in fees for athletics and also for lunch prices, and we will be mindful in maintaining a 6% minimum fund balance. The budget for tonight has an ending fund balance for fiscal year 2020 of 13.41%. So we're well within that guideline. So we move forward with these assumptions after we had our conversation with the board on June 10th. And you have a budget book in front of you, and I want to just get you to open that up and take a look at it a little bit. We put a budget book together for a few purposes. One, it documents our decision-making about this budget in the long term. It's a digital copy, it'll be linked on the website, and we'll have a document to go back to, to remind ourselves about the big decisions that went into this budget. It summarizes our budget and its thinking in a manner that's consumable. You might be able to lift your own elevator speeches out of this. It's very high-level, but it's also consumable for community members, and we'll continue to take feedback and improve this over time. And I believe that it breaks down the mystery around the budget, that it's, school finance can be daunting, but it's, but it's consumable and accessible, and that's the purpose of the budget book. So there's, there's several sections in the book. I want you to notice that inside the front cover, there's a letter from the business office to Superintendent O'Sai. And then before you get into all the sections of the budget, we have the page from the strategic plan, and it's really important that that's here, because every dollar that we talk about in this budget supports that mission of achieving success, one student at a time. And on the back of that strategic plan document, this idea of this budget book and the structures that we're putting in place are really a part of the, of strategy too, structures and systems. And as we begin to make our budget narrative more consumable and accessible, this is all part of that. And we're going to continue to improve this process over time. I want you to also notice in that page that has the executive summary, and you'll see that table with the total revenues and expenses for the budget. It's on page one of two of the executive summary, because those are the high-level numbers that we'll need in our audit for comparison purposes. And then on page two of two, that is really the heart of, that's the total budget for all funds. So then there's several sections of the budget. There's the organizational section, and there's an overview of the school board, the superintendent's cabinet, and you'll notice some information about all of the facilities. And then the org chart is in there. The introductory section reviews again the assumptions in the budget and gives an overview of the budget in several different ways, breaks down a little bit about how the UFR system works. And I think if you read through that, you'll learn a lot about how the budget was built on the, on both the revenue side and the expenditure side. And as questions arise from board members, from finance committee members, from community members, we just keep adding information so that we all have a shared understanding. The financial section has a breakdown of revenues and expenditures for all of the funds, and you can start to see the nature of the funds and what drives them differently. And then in the informational section, we just include a lot of data so we can remember that all of these actions of the board throughout the year tie into the budget. So we've got our timeline, we've got enrollment projections, and that work that we do early in the fall, the levy certification. Tonight, we're going to take action on another bond issue, so we'll have our debt principal and interest payment schedule always in the budget book. The action that the board took on operating capital in March, and then the long-term facility maintenance plan is also included. And then we have a tab for the mid-year budget update, because as always, we know that the budgets are projections by January or February. We'll know more information, we'll update enrollment and any other new assumptions. That's what's in your budget book that should give you access to most of the information that you need. This is the total of all of the budgets, and you can see what we're having the board adopt tonight, our total revenues and total expenditures. Keep in mind that the general fund revenues and expenditures includes all of the reserved fund balances, all the fund balances that are set aside, so the severance payments are included there. We made an intentional decision to buy down operating capital fund balance. That's included in there as well. Then we have the school nutrition fund, community service, of course, building construction. Notice there that there's a giant imbalance between revenues and expenditures, that's because we're buying down that bond issue, that 100.9 million bond issue that we talked about earlier. So there's a little bit of interest earnings, but we're spending down a fund balance. And then, of course, the debt service fund to give you a total for all funds. And I want to remind the board again that although this, this fund balance is ending in a positive way with 13.41% unreserved fund balance, we know that we have a general fund that we are spending more, our expenditures are higher than revenue, so we have to be mindful of the future. And these are the things that we know are in place, our operating referendum that has an inflationary factor. That was a great decision, and we're thankful to the community for approving that operating referendum, because that increase, that inflationary increase will make sense for us in the long term. The capital projects levy for technology is in place for 10 years, costs that otherwise would reside in the general fund. The long-term facilities maintenance funding will improve conditions in the school district so that our utilities and other costs of doing business can, can be reduced and our operating capital funds can be preserved. And we have an OPEB trust in place, and as we continue to think about doing a pay-as-you-go OPEB levy that we discussed a couple of weeks ago, that will help us preserve the general fund. And we are always looking at budget efficiencies, energy savings. Again, the OPEB levy that will enhance that OPEB trust. We have converted to a self-funded medical to partner up with our self-funded dental, and we hope that over time that will keep premiums down. And the superintendent has long been focusing on enrollment and making sure that we keep the students in St. Louis Park Public Schools that live here. And of course, we always want to be mindful of legislative funding. This was a fairly positive year, but we always want to be making sure that the legislature funds public schools in a way that helps us to stay solvent. Of course, these are the next steps. As you approve the budget tonight, we'll, we'll roll right into the next budget year with preliminary tax levy in September. All of those actions help us in the long run with our budget needs. We'll know more about fall enrollment. We'll have our audit report for this year that we're finishing in a couple of days. And then in December, we'll approve the final levy, and we'll be back with a mid-year update for this fiscal year. And we wanted to show you in the columns how we dance among three fiscal years most of the time, so that it stays clear in your mind what year we're making decisions about. So I can, at this time, take any questions that you might have.
Patricia, this is phenomenal. Thank you so much. And I really want to point out to the community, the back of our strategic plan also has strategic delinators. And as we move into this time of, we don't know what's going to happen legislatively two years from now, we have a good idea of what's coming with enrollment, but we do need to make some hard decisions, and this is the guide of how we're going to do that. And Superintendent O'Sai is going to be convening a new panel of people working together for the next strategic plan, and the two have to work together, because what you've put down on paper for the work, you have to pay for it. And, and we do have to take a hard look at some of our routines, past practice, and, and make some new decisions so that we can be stronger moving forward. And, and this document will memorialize that process for us. Thank you so much.
Patricia, I just, I just have a couple. One, I wanted to go back to the fiscal year 2020 budget and just say in different words what I think I heard you say.
Got it.
To make sure that I got it. Because when you look at it, it looks like, you know, $30,000 to $40,000 difference in, in revenue and expenditures. But the difference really comes under the building, the major difference comes under building construction. And that's because we borrowed money, we bonded, call the bond, in order to pay for the facilities work that we're doing. And that's what this shows, the borrowed money.
That's right.
Okay, that's right. Just want to make sure people at home are speaking your language and my language. And then, under the organizational, I like this budget. I echo what Karen said, it's so helpful, it's so clearly stated for those of us who are not skilled accountants. It's, it's just great. There's a lovely organizational chart that I was going to try to find.
Let's pull it up on page three.
There it is. And, and I'll just say as an aside, the class size doesn't change under this budget, because I know that's always a concern for parents. But I just wondered, either from you or from Aspen, if we could hear about, about two things here. One, this appears to be a new position, Curriculum and Programs Coordinator, and just the rationale and how we intend to use that and what the thinking is on that. That's the first question. I'll stop.
From Chair Gorres, members of the board. So the Curriculum and Program Coordinator position is a redirection of funds that, there was a position formerly combined with Community Education, where Curriculum and Instruction and Community Education shared a position. There was a decision made because of some changes in community ed and some, that some need increased in Curriculum and Instruction with all of the different curriculum review process to separate that budget capacity. And we've added that budget capacity with a little bit of Title budget capacity, which was already there, to support the needs of Title I, to create this position. So what this position will do is support the work that will be occurring over the next several years related to all of our curriculum review cycles and process to ensure that we're efficient and supportive of the needs in that area.
And then the second update, I guess I want to, related to the budget, is we have, at Aquila, we had added an assistant principal, I think it was last year, and that's continuing this year, but not at any of the other schools. And I just thought it would be helpful for us to hear again that rationale, how it worked, and I assume it worked well because we're continuing it. But I thought it would be good to ask those questions and hear your answers.
Absolutely. So as you, as you mentioned, two years ago, we added the assistant principal position. At that time, Aquila was and still is our largest elementary school with the largest number of elementary staff. And we, we made that decision so that we were able to effectively support the supervision needs of all of the staff and students at the school. We're still under the process of reviewing that decision and making sure that that's meeting the needs that we have here in St. Louis Park Public Schools as it relates to instructional leadership and as it relates to supervision and appropriate feedback to our staff. I would say that we're going to spend time this year continuing to, to look at that. And by the end of this school year, we should have gathered enough data to determine if that's the most effective approach to meeting our needs or if we need to consider a different model.
A bit of a broader question, maybe that's Nancy's question. So I don't necessarily need a number tonight, although you might have it. I was wondering what the percentage of our expenditures are to administrative costs? Obviously, it's a big deal when you, when the stories come out about the University of Minnesota and, you know, other, you know, school districts as well that, you know, might have what some people may consider, you know, too high a level of administrative costs and not enough in the classroom. Do we have a sense on that? And if not, can we?
I do not have the breakdown of that in this data, but that's the first thing we'll do. To improve the budget book is break, break down the expenses by program, so I can get that to you.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to kind of go back to Nancy's, just clear, saying, saying in my own words what I heard. And I was, I apologize that I missed the last meeting. I was at GED graduation, so I just, and I think I heard this there, but I just kind of wanted to say it again so that everyone is on, we're all on the same page. So what we're, what we're looking at for next year is holding class size steady, not doing program cuts, and assuming a very stable enrollment or very, very close to stable enrollment, doing a minor, a couple of minor adjustments in fees for, in a couple of areas, and then maintaining well above our board improvement look on balance.
Yes, that's accurate.
Thank you, Patricia. Great job.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we are going to get the Career Pathway Advisory Board presentation. I'm so excited to hear this. Carrie Jenison does such able work with the Career Pathway Advisory Board, and I will let the other members that are here introduce themselves. And I see that Carrie's just sort of not yet joining them. What the? Okay. She's here, but she's in her seat, but she's moving now. Closer, anyway, to cheer her hoop on.
So a good evening, and thank you for the opportunity for all of us to present a few highlights from our 2018-19 goals and action items for the Career Pathway Advisory Board. My name's Tim Jenison, and I'm the chair and business representative on the board. And I'm also a father of three daughters, all of which who went through St. Louis Park, the youngest having just graduated a couple of weeks ago. So, yeah, so very proud. And presenting with me is St. Louis Park alumni Sarah Jenison, along with Mark Miller, teacher and a student, Anil Pele, who will be presenting. And really, it's here, we're representing the board, a portion of the board, and it's this collaborative effort that really makes this this board provide value and and drive us. So that's why we're all here tonight, to really highlight some of those key activities and goals. So with that, I'm just going to jump real quickly into summarizing some of the activities from this past year in line with our goals. We develop in goals and action items every year to provide focus and strategy. And our, at our last board meeting, we look ahead for the coming year because we wanted to get a jump start on the year and take advantage of the full school year. And with that, the members actively with the staff come up with options and act, and actual action plan to say, here's what we're going to do in terms of this coming school year. And we really want to take, hit the ground running. The other piece is we, the outcomes that we generate are aligned with our district mission, our strategic plan, and aligned with Perkins Goals because that's how it started. And we continue to grow that and do that and always stay aligned with that. Our board meetings, I would say it's really a model that's in action. It's a very active, engaging board. The board meetings are an opportunity for us to all come together, reflect in what we've accomplished, showcase some highlights, which there's many of, so we always crunch our agenda and it's fully packed, but really celebrate what we've done and then also then look ahead and say, what are we doing next? And how do we drive that? And then finally, it, the the board members are really expected to build relationships with our teachers and our staff and our, the teachers and the students. And the number one stakeholder in all of this, of course, is our students. And one thing I do want to say is every meeting we have, we have student engagement, whether it's showcasing or student one-on-ones. We do interviews, which they love, we love. As a business representative, it's just great to see these kids and hear their stories and what are they looking for and what's their passion. So to me, that's really energizing. And then we've also taken some time to reflect on, as a board, and our operating model. It's always good to look at it and say, what, what do we need to shift? How do we tune? How do we calibrate with that? So first goal, one of the things we're focused on is rebrand, rebranding and engaging in our college career readiness. And so with that, we're fortunate to have Cargill help provide pro bono some branding for us. And with that, our intention is to really simplify what our name is, what, what are we, what are we trying to productize so we can better advertise, more importantly, showcase, here's what we do, and for clarity of all our stakeholders, whether it's the community or students or teachers. And so with that, we landed on some key deliverables, one of which is an infographic, which is a one-page placemat that really describes what we do, our mission. And we landed on a word called momentum. And it was a lightbulb moment, and this always happens through many cycles, and there's never a straight path to anything. And why momentum? Really, it's taking what we've done, expanding our footprint of what we do based on the demand that we're seeing because it's significant. And how do we better supply that? And how do we support that demand? And momentum is a scientific term, and anybody that's in physics recognizes it's a rate of execution with mass. So our footprint is increasing mass. We want to accelerate, and we want to do more. So we landed on momentum. So more to come on that. But I wanted to showcase that piece because it's exciting, so we can actually publish that and advertise that. So more to come. Moving on. So what I'd like to do next is introduce Sarah Jenison. And this is, again, part of our rebranding. And Sarah, working with staff, has basically rebranded and and updated our high school college career readiness website. So Sarah.
Hi. Yeah, so I've been working with Kara Mueller. And for a while now, we've actually been talking to students and parents, alumni. So as I mentioned, doing the interviews with students, we used the, was the parent high school community survey and asking them, what do you guys need? Like, what's your, what's your biggest question? What's confusing? So from there, we actually gained a really good insight. Biggest question people had was, okay, my student or me as a student, right now, today, what do I need to do right now? What's, what's next? What information do I need right now as a freshman or a senior in October? So they're very specific questions for them. So using that information, we made a little roadmap for the website that you can see up here. We broke it down into three steps with that question in mind. So thinking about those users, the students and the parents, and then creating a, basically a journey for them when they go onto the career and college readiness website to help them figure out, you know, what they need to know for their specific individual questions. So we started with the information architecture. So when they first land on the page, you know, what does the navigation look like? How do we make it really easy for them to get to the exact spot they need to get to? Looking at the content, making sure it's simple, easy to skim through, but also has enough, you know, details in certain spots so they're not stuck with questions later on. And then the design, so the overall feel of it, what's the brand of CCAR? Just making it very clean and professional as well as easy to navigate. So, yeah, so here's just a couple of examples. This is the home screen. You can see on the, to your guys' left, what the original welcome page looked like. There's a lot of great information, a lot of great resources, but a ton of words, you know, it's like, okay, where do I go from here? Where do I go with my specific question? What is career and college readiness? Like, what does this mean? So we rebranded it to add some images showing students who are actually involved in some of the programs they may not even realize it. And then some quick links, a quick overview of here's what career and college readiness is. And then updating the navigation, really shortening it to make it easy for them to hop around that section of the website. And then here's just one more example of a, just a grade level page. So you can see, again, a lot of great information, but a lot of words. So we just like to give, here's a nice little overview, here's the highlights for your grade. This is ninth grade. So just saying, here's the big things to expect this year, here's what you should be thinking about, just so they're not overwhelmed. And then we have a nice little timeline at the bottom for them. So they can say, okay, it's October. What do I need to know? Where do I need to go? And then they can just click on those little colors on the different months. They can just click on what's next, and it'll take them to the next page so they can look in more detail. Any questions?
I just want to say, as the parent of an incoming sophomore, thank you. Good. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to, this is on the district webpage, right? Or is it on the high school webpage? Which webpage? Both? It's on the high school webpage. So just to say that. And I love your new opening screen because I, you know, career pathways. What do kids want to know about how they get, what do they need to learn here? What do they need to to get to either their career or their college or? And you've got career, you've got college resources, and you've got career and technical education. Ken's not here, but I have to mention that because he would do it if he was, you know, and he's on your board, so you know that matters. Not every kid is going to go to college, but they're all going to, you know, want to have a passion and something they can work at, and you're kind of covering all the bases. So, good job on the website.
Okay, so the the big question is how it is all of the work, the hard work, the awesome work of both staff and and everyone is, how does it impact students? And and so St. Louis Park with children first and and all of the work that we do, it comes back to a student. So I'm going to talk just a little bit, and I'm going to let Anil, who I'm so proud of and who's given up his Monday evening when he already graduated, to come in and talk about this stuff. But the the beauty of a program like this in St. Louis Park is it gives our students a true opportunity to explore something that could be their career. And I'm so honored when when someone comes to, Mark, will you partner with Emerson? That's a no-brainer. Of course I will. And and something wonderful happened with Emerson this year. And it didn't just impact the students, it impacts the teacher. And it it's changing what I'm going to do next year because I saw the impact that it has on students and how important it was for them. And it was just amazing. So I'm going to let kind of Anil talk about the whole experience. He does a wonderful job, and then you guys can nail him with some really hard questions.
Hello, team members of the board. I'm Anil, as you all know. So Emerson was a project that we started about, I believe it was, was it January? It was March. Well, March was when we went to present, but we had been working on the project, which is this little thing, for about two months beforehand. So they approached us in early 2019, and they said, hey, you know, we got, you know, from your Miller guy, and he seems like interested in this, and we'd like for you guys to come and help us out. So they came and presented to us about a, about what they do. So Emerson is, they're like a, a measurement company. What they do is they work on things like water pressure measurements, temperature measurements, stuff like that. So their project for us was that we had to design a, just a machine that could measure the water level, the temperature, and the pressure of just water in a water bottle. So this is the final product that we worked on. So I can run through a little bit of a diagnosis here. This is the, the battery part that powers it. And this is what we use, we used Arduino's, they're really helpful. This is the, the display which we hooked up, which would allow us to go ahead and display the output. This is our little switchboard that we use to program it. And then this right here, I don't know if you can see it, but there's a small little metal filament here that measures the temperature. And then up here is where we would fit in the, the water level sensor. It's actually, it's an ultrasonic sensor that would beam down, hit the water surface, come back up, and, you know, measure it. And honestly, the thing that really, the thing that I took away from this was that what we students think of as jobs are vastly different from what we actually experience on the field. Because I went into engineering thinking of either it's, it's either me standing behind a computer designing something, or it's me in a factory assembly line. But when you go there and when you see this, you you learn that it's actually, it's, it's much more than that. It's, it's a whole process. It's going from time management to working in a group to, like, marketing, design, fiscal problems, stuff like that. It's, it's much more than what students think it is. And I think that's, that's the big takeaway here is that more practical opportunities let us learn what, you know, the workplace actually is.
So, Anil, I'm just kind of curious what what you're going to be doing in the fall, and then how did this experience influence your direction?
Sure. Well, I am heading down to Florida in the fall, down to Embry-Riddle, the specialty aerospace engineering school, which is what I'll be doing. And again, this thing just, you know, this pushed me forward. It really showed me that, you know, I'm going to have fun doing aerospace engineering. I'll have fun with this field. And I, I might have been a little bit hesitant beforehand, but seeing this actually happen in real life is, it will help me, you know, push forward.
We'll see if it's fun around finals times.
Yeah, true.
Flip, flip, flip side, we also have had students through the process walk away from it and say, I'm not going to be an engineer. So, I mean, it, it works both ways. And I, and I think, again, it was so important for the kids to experience it on their own. You know, they, they take engineering with me for three years, and they all want to be engineers, and then they go off, and it's much better to do this now. And and some of them are like, well, I don't want to be an engineer, but I could see myself working in the business aspect at Emerson, which, again, is just as powerful. And and programs like this allow our kids to to figure that out because, you know, nowadays, when you're, when you're spending $40,000 a year at a college, you can't, you know, you can't afford to do that, you know, for two or three years at college. So it was an awesome, awesome experience.
And just for the viewers at home, I have to say that that's Mark Miller, one of our many outstanding teachers. And Mark, what are, what were you teaching last year and what will you be teaching next year?
So I teach engineering one, two, and three, and then I teach two classes of physics as well.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, this is a great example of what the advisory board and the community brings together, and really, and this is one of, one of the examples. And I'm thrilled. And what Anil was attesting to is so true because where I work, similar environment, but to give these students the opportunity to actually see it in action is so helpful. So another area that we, I'm showcasing here, and unfortunately, we couldn't get the students to be here, but Yona Davis and Trevor Paulson, along with Kara Mueller, focused in on the Innovation Center in the four walls of St. Louis Park in the high school, and that's important, too. So again, here's another example of our students really, I mean, the innovation and the, the energy and what they bring to the table. It's amazing. So with this, their vision was to create a hands-on learning space for high school students to basically share learning, allow them to become leaders, be creative, and really have a place to collaborate. And so with that, they developed a whole plan around this, a vision, here's what we want to come out of there with. They put together some, they had some engagement with folks from Boston Scientific to develop a plan and a timeline. So timeline. So similar to what Anil is saying, hey, they're exposing themselves to building a plan and a business plan around this, and here's what it means, and here's the objectives. And I look at that, and I think back in my youth, and I never had that opportunity. So I learned on the, on the job, right? So the students are definitely getting a leg up in terms of advancing themselves for getting ready for the workplace. So the, what you see here is the workspace before, and for some people, maybe this is organized, but for a lot, it's not. And is it conducive for collaborating and 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 what they need? So they took this space and basically with their plan and their vision and objectives organized in a way so that students could have a better learning environment and be able to collaborate, pulling together a lot of different equipment that's been at the school, but really organized in a way that's easy to access, and they can also manage it and track it. That was another thing, too, because there's a lot of great tools here, but how do they better manage and maintain it? So that's really the objective of what they were shooting for. And if Yona was here, he could talk to this so much more eloquently than I can, having driven, done all this work with his, his peers. Here's some additional pictures in terms of the students actually using the space, where they can easily find the equipment they need, they can, they track it, and they're looking at tracking it more readily in terms of maintaining it. And everything is marked in terms of where the equipment should be, so it provides a safe environment, which is another big takeaway for them. Where I work, safety is number one. So how do we ensure a safe environment? So they're learning about safety in terms of these workspaces. So future, they're looking at checking out, teachers can check out the space, it's open for students to use the equipment, and there's can be classes held in that space now. So it's a lot more conducive for those type of activities. Moving forward, community outreach, so goal number four. I had mentioned before, we're looking at, at our, our board and how the demand is increasing, and we're seeing a lot of success. And with that, we have to take a step back and look at, okay, based on our goals and outcomes that we're having, what's our current state? And so we had a subcommittee or subgroup from our board spend time to really reflect on, what is our current status? Where are success? Where do we see demand increasing in terms of our school and partnerships and relationships? And with that, evaluating our current operating model. So looking back, what, six years, seven years? We started on a piece of paper and said, here's what we're trying to do, and here's, there was a handful of us. And since then, it's evolved significantly. And so now it's time to really look at and say, oh, what can we do to drive more efficiencies and be more effective and drive more value, value outcomes? How can we engage more people? How can we help more students in terms of? How can we help more students in terms of providing them opportunities as aligned to our goals?" So again, looking at, also looking at diversity across the board in terms of what are we missing? Do we need to inject different, you know, more diverse students, you know, diversity in students or industries or, you know, all those dimensions and professionals too? So I represent the professional side of it, but what are we missing in terms of other professional areas that we might not have represented today? And that is the end of the presentation, but I wanted to thank everybody for, again, for the opportunity to present. And I really, really appreciate all of the collaboration with the staff, the students, teachers. I've learned so much through the process. I probably learned more than they've learned from me, but it's been a great experience and it's a great investment of our time to ensure our students are getting what they need in terms of their schooling, their education. Thank you.
Questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Really wonderful. I did note that there are like 42 people with profiles in your annual report that are on your board, and each of those profiles is amazing and brings something unique for a student to access and get more information about as well as enhance the program. So thanks to you and everybody else who's contributing to make this program such a success.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Policy Development's second reading of Policy 912: Adult Education Programs. And we looked at this last time. Anybody have any questions or comments? All right, seen none. It'll come up on the Action Agenda. Next up, we have the Consent Agenda. Is there anything anybody wants to pull off the Consent Agenda for discussion? Seen none. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda? Moved by Ann. Is there a second? Seconded by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Carrie Sissel. Next up, we have the Action Agenda. This is the LTFM bond sale. I'm sure we're going to get a presentation and any questions answered if needed before we move to the Action Agenda. I can see Patricia Magnuson moving towards the podium with her partners in success.
Good evening again, Chair Gore, Superintendent Ossai, and members of the board. You do have a paper copy of the Sale Day Report in front of you that was brought to us by Ellers and it's also in the Board Book. We had a successful bond sale today and we have Jody Zesba and Greg Crowe here from Ellers and Associates. I believe Greg's going to take us through the Sale Day Report so you can learn more about what happened today.
Thanks, Patricia. Madam Chair and Board Members, it's very nice to be here tonight. And I won't go into the whole story, but Nancy and I had a short conversation before the meeting and I did check with my parents and my brothers as to whether we have a great-grandma Crowe that's related to you. And I described the train accident and my mom and dad said they didn't think so and my brother accused me of starting to drink already. So you'll need to share the whole story with the rest of the board at some point, but I don't think we're related.
Thanks, Max.
Anyway, it's great to be here tonight. As Patricia said, I'm Greg Crowe with Ellers Education Team. I told you all I'm Jody's assistant before, you're all familiar with her before the meeting. I'm actually Jody's boss and as difficult as that can be, you can't even imagine how hard it is. So anyway, I have the Sale Day Report that we worked on today. I'll just get to the punchline to start. We did, there was a lot of interest in the bonds today. We had 11 bidders, which is a very high number. We like to see at least three, we hope for six, so 11 is a great result. And the interest rates are significantly lower than we even projected a month ago. Interest rates have been dropping, so it's a great time, particularly from a cash flow basis, to be borrowing money and, you know, kind of knocking out some projects before construction inflation hits because the interest costs are so low. So let's go through the Sale Day Report and we'll put some numbers on that for you. If you just go to the inside page, the first line we should, I should just mention, you authorized a higher bond amount. We issued 22.795 million of bonds today. And Jody, when she was here last month, I think probably walked you through the idea of a premium bid and receiving a premium bid for the bonds that would be higher than what you were selling them for. It actually happened. We projected a certain amount, it happened. We got a higher premium than we projected, so we reduced the bond size by about a million and a half dollars while still funding the same project amounts and actually a little bit, a little bit more, so we built in a little contingency for you. So we can go through that and the numbers, but that's why that number looks a little different than last month's number that you authorized. You know, the purposes for deferred maintenance and health and safety projects, we do mention that your rating was affirmed, the underlying rating, which is the credit rating for the district on a standalone basis at the AA2 level, that's a very high rating. There are only six school districts that rate with Moody's that have higher bond ratings than that. There are three AAA districts, Edina, Minnetoka, and Wayzata, and then three AA1 districts, Anoka, Osseo, and Rosemont Apple Valley. So landing where you are is a great bond rating. And I'll just mention, there's a detailed rating report in the back that you can go through at your leisure or particularly if you have insomnia, I'd recommend starting with the footnotes and the disclaimers. But on page nine, the rating report really emphasizes overall that you have a large and growing tax base, above-average income levels, stable financial operations, and sound enrollment trends. So when we went through that dental appointment that a rating call can be, they were impressed by the district's operation. So you're challenged by above-average debt and pension burdens, but that really is primarily due to TRA, which is the State Pension Program. All school districts in Minnesota have been receiving that comment. And there was the legislation in 2017 to help address the pension issue that school districts face, so we're hoping we'll see that reflected soon. Overall, the comments that were in the rating report are generally consistent with the comments we received when we issued the bonds for the big school building project. So then let's look at the number of bids. That portion of the report, you received 11 bids. The low bidder was JP Morgan Securities out of New York and their bid was 2.38%. Interestingly, with 11 bids, you might expect that the range of bids would be quite wide. In fact, you see the high bid was 2.48%. So a tenth of a percent difference between the low bid and the high bid. And when we look at the detailed bidding, you can see that the five low bids were actually within about two one-hundredths of a percent of each other. So there is a lot of demand right now for municipal bonds, safe harbor investments. They know you're going to pay them, they know what to expect in terms of interest rates and so, everybody's sharpening their pencils and you're the beneficiary of that. There's a table in the middle with a summary of the sale results and we'll look at the details of that in the attachments. The italicized note is a note about the premium and the downsizing of the bond and the impact that had on the, slight impact on the true interest cost. In the note, or we just note that rates have come down from, we had about 2.75% in that pre-sale report, so this overall true interest cost of 2.41% is going to result in, just under $900,000 of lower payments for the bonds over the life of the bond. So that's a direct benefit in part on the $500,000 to your taxpayers, whether you're living for the debt service for the bonds, and $400,000 benefit to your general fund where you're paying for the debt service out of the LTFM revenue that you receive. So benefits both ways. Closing date is July 18th, so that's when you'll receive the funds for the bonds. Let's look quickly at the attachments. I did mention page one and two, the bids, and you can see the, as I mentioned, there was a lot of interest and you can see it was national interest from regional bidders as well as, you know, some of the big banks on the East Coast. And if you look on page three, that's where we kind of walk through the sources and uses, page three of the attachments, and describe how this bond size with this type of premium still generates enough funds for your project. And net available for project costs at $25.6 million is about $300,000 over what we had talked about in the pre-sales. You can use that for deferred maintenance projects or health and safety projects as well. Since we had met the tax impact and the authorization amount of the board, we thought, given the great rates, we'd maximize the funds available to the district to finance your projects and just have a little bit of a contingency as you're going through the projects. Page four is a detailed debt schedule for both bond components, the health and safety and deferred maintenance. Since the health and safety portion is funded with a tax levy, we have a separate schedule for those payments on page five. And that's really small print, obviously, and so if you just kind of want to see a graphical picture of it, page six, it looks pretty close to what we sent during the pre-sale, but the bars are a little shorter because of the savings on the interest rate side. Page seven then is the calculation of the debt service as it relates to the amount of revenue you have right now in LTFM and going forward. And so you can see on the right-hand side, you still have, even after you've made your debt payments, a little over $1.1 million per year for kind of regular annual expenses that you might have in deferred maintenance. We threw a chart in on page eight. This is a chart of the interest rate on a AAA or on a AA2 bond of a 20-year. So it's not exactly what you're issuing, but we kind of wanted you to see the shape of the interest rate curve over the last, and this is five years, but you can see in the last six months or so, interest rates have dropped dramatically since, from where they were at that time. And then again, the balance of the report attachments is the rating report from Moody's and the press release that they released to, when they affirmed your rating. You do have a resolution awarding the sale to the low bidder. There are a lot of blanks in there, but all those blanks will be filled with the information that's in this report, so you can have everything in front of you that you need to take action. And obviously the blanks are related to the bid results, so when the bond attorney drafted those, he didn't have that information. So we will fill in those blanks and get that to you for your minutes prior to your next meeting. And if you have any more of that? [laughter] Peer evaluation apparently is occurring behind me. So do you have any questions that I can answer?
Joe has a question.
Yeah, I have a question. Part of your peer evaluation is really, maybe a basic question, but I, so when you have all these bids, you're awarding the bid to the one with the lowest true interest rate. However, you have other bids that have the low, have a lower net interest cost.
Right.
Could you kind of take me through why that is?
Yeah, it's a combination of that premium. So when you get a bigger premium, you're basically having somebody, somebody is, in a sense, prepaying your interest. And so we basically have to look at the whole price of the bond and the premium versus the interest payments, and that's, and then there's actually a present value calculation. So it matters where the interest payments are different. So for example, you can see in the, on the rates on the, and we only show this for the low bidder, but the rates for the JP Morgan bid, you see they start at 5% and then they go to 4% and 3%. Those are what are called the coupon rates. So each of the principal payments in each of those years has a different interest rate. And so when there's a, so the present value calculation comes into play on the true interest cost as well.
So all the other bids are going to stack that up a little bit differently? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so everybody offered different premiums, different coupon rates, and different yields. And so if we calculated the yield, the re-offering yield for all of the bids, you would have seen that those are slightly lower for the JP Morgan bid. And that's, and that ends up coming through in that true interest rate calculation. Okay, thank you.
So is that like paying points when you're going after a mortgage on a particular house?
Actually, that's a little bit different. If you look on the Sale Day Report, and that actually comes into play as well, on page, on the attachment, on page three, you can see the, under uses of fund, there's an underwriter's discount. That's kind of similar to points and that is the compensation the underwriter takes at the time of the sale. Now they'll be reselling the bonds and attempting to make money as they do that out in the market, but when we broadly say premium, but really what we're talking about is the net premium because they offer a premium, which you can see at the top is 2.945 million, and then they take a discount, and in this case it was only $21,000, which is extremely low compared to what we talked about. So the net premium is the difference of those two. So someone else might have offered even a larger premium, but they took a bigger discount. And so the net premium was lower to you as the issuer, and so the benefit was lower. So all of that comes into play as well in that calculation of the true interest rate.
Greg, thank you for that. We are going to take action on this, on our Action Agenda, and the recommendation is that we go with the lowest bidder, JP Morgan Securities, correct?
Correct.
Right. And we saved not quite a million dollars almost because of the way the interest rates came in, and we yielded about $300,000 more dollars to spend on other things based on my lay version of what I heard you say. Close enough?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you so much. Appreciate you being here. Sorry we don't appear to be related, but in the human family. All right, next up is, on our Action Agenda is the 2019 Election Duties Resolution. Before we get to that, I just want to say, set the stage for why we're, you know, one of the reasons we're talking about that now is in November 2019, we have four seats that are coming up for election on the school board. The last cycle, we had three school board members elected, Anne Casey, Mary Tombeck, and Karen Waters. That means the four seats that are currently held by Jim Benneke, Nancy Gore, Ken Morrison, and Joe Tatalovich are going to come open in November. Any one of us could file again, or all of us could, or none of us could, who's to know? But we also can have anyone in the community who's interested in filing and running to be on our school board do so. The reason that we're talking about it now is to establish who's going to handle the paperwork regarding to the election, and that's the resolution that's coming up, but also because there's a time, there's a filing deadline time period. And our board next weeds on August 13th, on August 12th I should say, but the last day to file is August 13th. So I really wanted to talk about this now so that if anybody is interested, the knowledge is out there, you can call board members and ask questions. The filing period is July 30th of 2019, two, or through August 13th, 2019. It says 5:00 PM, but the city office says they close at 4:30, so I wouldn't wait for the last half hour if you're interested. So July 30th to August 13th. If you file and you change your mind and you want to withdraw, there's a paper that you have to file timely and that has to be filed within two days of the end of the filing period or by August 15th at 5:00 PM, and don't wait till the last half hour. Our elections are a little bit different than the city council's elections, and I just want to say a couple of words about that. The filing fee is only $2. You don't have to have a petition. There's a petition option, but for $2, why would you? We are, we are not ranked choice voting on the school board because of the statute. We have four open seats. The top four vote-getters will be elected to the school board. You don't have to rank people, but the top four people that are voted with the most votes will be elected to the school board. That's how it works for us. The minimal qualifications in our terms are four years, just for the record, four years at a time, and then you run again if you choose to. You have to be 21 years old or more upon assuming office, that would be January 1 of 2020. You have to be a resident of this district for at least 30 days before the general election. The general election is in November, so you have to be an eligible voter. You may not have been convicted of any offense for which you're required to register as a predatory offender under Minnesota's statute 23.166. And you can't have a conflict of interest with the board, and a conflict of interest includes if you are an employee of the district and you expect to nick over $8,000, that would be a conflict for you being on the school board. So that's kind of the summary. You can check this out yourself, you probably should. I'm not a lawyer, but I'm trying to give people, for this purpose, for this purpose. Let me rephrase that. But I wanted to get the basic facts out and how we differ a little bit from the city council. There is some paperwork involved in filing to be a candidate that you have to meet timely. There is some paperwork involved in financial reports, and when you file, you get those details and you can ask people who run and they can give you a few tips. But because of the paperwork that's involved in that and But because of the paperwork that's involved in that and other duties that are involved in running an election and getting a ballot and doing all of that, we have a resolution that's coming before us and a recommendation from the superintendent. And I'm just going to let Aston speak to that resolution, what it is, why he's recommending it, and then we can take any questions about the resolution. People can say anything they want that might tell folks why it's such a great thing to be on the school board, or anything else you want to say about the upcoming election cycle.
Chair Goris, members of the board. This evening, I'm recommending that the school board approve this resolution that would allow the city clerk of the city of St. Louis Park to carry out all necessary election duties and functions of the school district clerk for the school district elections. In the past, as you all are aware, the executive assistant to the superintendent has performed these duties. We've had some trends, we've had some transition over the past year, which will make this more of a difficult task for us as we head into this upcoming election. Several months ago, the city offered to handle all election duties for us, recognizing that they already facilitate many of the election functions for us and, you know, as it relates to city elections. So this evening, I'm recommending that the school board approve this resolution, allowing the city clerk to carry out all necessary election duties. I think it's also important to mention that we would still, meaning we, the school district, would be responsible for canvassing all of the votes at the end of the election, but the city clerk and the city of St. Louis Park would support us with filing and all other necessary paperwork from the election. As the resolution states, this, this would remain in effect until the school board chose to revoke the resolution.
And it would be the school board that would do the canvassing, because that's what the statute says. But any other questions or comments anybody has? I'm grateful for the city for being willing to do that, and what that would mean is folks would be going to city hall and finding the city clerk to do any filing during that time period. And I, if this passes, I would suggest that we maybe get something up on our webpage that clarifies that and directs people where they need to go and find them. So it's sort of good to go. Is there, Yankoman?
I'll just say that I heard that there was this candidate once who actually went to city hall to file for school board role. I don't know who that is, but she actually went there first, so I think it just makes good sense, actually, that we're doing it this way. Some of us think that that is intuitive, that the city council, but the clerk's office would actually be handling this responsibility. So I think it makes good sense.
So 100% of the candidates that we know of who went to city hall to file for school board election have won?
They have, actually. So just as a tip out there for any of you watching at home, it's a sure bet.
All right, is there a motion to approve the 2019, let me try that word, is there a motion to approve? It is recommended that the school board approve the 2019 election duties resolution as presented. Is there a motion? Moved by Mary. Is there a second? Seconded by Karen. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes six, so I'm an aye. I have to back up. I forgot, I got so excited about hearing the Good Bond Report, I forgot to have us actually take action on it at that time. So thank you to my team. So we're going to back up to action item A. It is recommended that the school board approve the award resolution for bond issue as presented. Is there a motion? Moved by Ann. Is there a second? Seconded by Mary. Is there any discussion?
It's easy to forget.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie six, so. Next up is the fiscal '20 budget approval. It is recommended that the school board approve the fiscal '20 budget as presented. Is there a motion? Moved by Karen. Is there a second? Seconded by Joe. Is there any discussion beyond what we've already had? Go ahead, Mary.
I'm just so excited to go home and get a glass of wine and open up my budget notebook, and I'm going to fill it up with new pages from time to time. It's just, it's going to be an amazing addition to my school board library, and I'm very grateful to Patricia and her team for giving that. What an amazing gift also to candidates and people who are newly coming on the board. It's just this great primer that I'm excited for other people to have.
I could not agree with that piece enough. I just, I read this when it came through in our board book this weekend, and I just was like, I want to give this to everyone. I'm sure no one else wants it, but, but I would like them to have it.
I did want to let you know that it's about 4.4% of the budget is administrative costs, so I just wanted to make sure I was clear about that, so that you had the answer to that question before you had to take action tonight. 4.4%.
Thank you. That sounds like great efficiency. So any other comments, questions?
And I'll just say, like, that, my recollection of what Sandy, say on your predecessor, calculated is, is around, in the four range, so that's good to know, like, just, just as some history. I know, you know, through Nancy's time and my time, that the administrative costs and the cabinet, that was dwindled down very low in tough times, and that's been steadily built up over, you know, current superintendent and the previous superintendent's time. And I, and the question is kind of based on, you know, have we built it up too much, or are we building it up too, you know, about the right amount, and this sounds like it's in line with what we should be expecting. So thank you for digging into that so quickly.
Okay, all in favor of the motion on the budget?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie six, so. Next up is the General Accounting Standards Board GASP 84 Student Activity Accounting. It is recommended that the school board approve. Well, before I read the motion, maybe we need a presentation first.
I don't have any further presentation. We talked about this on June 10th when we were together, so I would recommend adopting this resolution for our GASP 84 Student Activities Accounting, which are separate from booster clubs and PTO funds, which are not a part of the school district, but completely separate. These are student activity clubs that are at the high school and in the school.
Great, so did we not remind me why we didn't act upon it last time? Was it just to, to, so we had some time to think about it? Oh, thank you.
It is recommended that school board approve, it is recommended that school board approve the changes presented in the resolution of the General Accounting Standards Board GASP 84 Student Activity Accounting. Is there a motion? Which one was it? Karen, and is there a second? Second is Mary. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie six, so. Next up, Minnesota State High School League Resolution 2019-2020. It is recommended that the school board approve the renewal of the Minnesota State High School League Resolution 2019-2020 as presented. Is there someone to present? I know this comes up every year, and I know we approve it, but I, what I always like is a little refresher.
Chair Goris, members of the board. Chair Goris, as you mentioned, this is an annual resolution, and this resolution just states that we're going to renew our membership with the Minnesota State High School League, and within that provides some information about voting members on behalf of the school district. So currently, our athletic director, Andy Ewold, is one of the voting, voting members in, in the past. Currently, I should say, Ken Morrison is serving as our representative for the Minnesota State High School League, so he will be listed as a voting member as well. To my knowledge, when I talked to Andy Ewold, there has not been in recent history any time in which members that were elected as voting members have voted, and they have to screen the changes.
All right, is there a motion in favor of the resolution? Moved by Ann. Is there a second? Seconded by Joe. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, aye, Carrie six, so. Next and last on the action agenda, policy development, second reading of policy 912 Adult Education Programs. It is recommended that the school board approve the second reading of policy 912 Adult Education Programs. Is there a motion? Karen moved. Is there a second? Mary seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie six, so. We're up to communications and transmittals. Karen?
So people are, people quickly remember that we do this every year. What are you reading this summer? Do you want our kids reading this summer? Sorry that I didn't give you any advance warning, but I'm finishing up Why Do All the Black Kids Sit Together at Lunch. I started Yard Sticks, the superintendent also had shared with me, and then I always reread Harry Potter from beginning to end because it makes me happy, because you have to read to learn, right? And read for pleasure. But I'll be adding a book to my reading list. Thank you, Patricia.
I don't have a lot of time for reading this summer. I'll teach you some new classes, but I am excited to read that book that we're all studying, Why Do the Black Kids Sit Together in Cafeteria? Read a couple of chapters.
Yes, my bookshelf is full. I finally just finished The Hate U Give. I can't believe it took me so long to read it, and so I have her other book, which I heard you, Ann, say you didn't like quite as much. Oh, you liked the second book better? Awesome. Is that one good for the kids, too? Noah's, Noah loved The Hate U Give. Okay. And then, right, Why Are All the Black Kids Sitting Together in the Cafeteria? And I am also going to finally read White Fragility, which has kind of made my way through, yes, Robin Nangello's book, and People's History of the United States, which I haven't actually read yet. But seventh grade INS has really gotten Luke, my middle son, into war history, and so he is reading that book, and so we're going to read that one together.
I had my recommendation to People's History of the United States. I read that over then last year, and it was really eye-opening.
I have a long list, I have a long, I'm leaving on vacation, for vacation on Wednesday, so there's like the bottom half of my suitcase, but I couldn't even think of what everything was, but I, what I, I looked in my audible to see what I was listening to, so I've always got several things going on. I'm listening to I Feel You, The Surprising Power of Extreme Empathy, let me see what that word was, by Chris Bean, narrated by my friend and some of our friend Susan Erickson, who's a, who's a St. Louis Park parent, and an amazing and wonderful audiobook narrator, award-winning audiobook narrator, actually. And so that is about empathy. It's very, I'm, I'm, I have eight hours, 46 minutes remaining. I think I've listened to about an hour of it, and it's excellent. And I also have on here for a long plane ride, The Underground Railroad by Colson Whitehead, which has been on my list for a long time, and I just haven't gotten to it yet. So 10 hours and 43 minutes of that for a plane ride.
I have The Fifth Risk by Michael Lewis sitting at my bedside, so I hope to get to that, because I always enjoy his writing. And then a book I had relatively recently finished, I might have said this is my reading last summer, is Bad Blood. I can't remember the author, he's a Wall Street Journal journalist, but it's about the company Theranos and their rise and fall, and Neil, our young engineer should probably be reading this as well, because it's, it's really, really gets into, I think, ethics and doing the right, doing the right thing, and who stepped up and who didn't step up. It's really interesting, interesting.
So I'll be, well, reading our book study book, Why Are All the Black Kids Sitting Together in the Cafeteria, and then also Culturally Responsive Leadership by Dr. Mohamed Khalifa. I'm listening to two books right now, The Souls of Black Folks by L. B. D. Boys and The Fire Next Time by James Paul.
Took me a while to find it on my phone, but I'm, I'm also reading our book club book, Why Are All the Black Kids Sitting Together in the Cafeteria? I just finished reading The Silent Life, which I thoroughly enjoyed. A lovely sort of mystery written by a psychotherapist herself, so you have all sorts of interesting insights into the concept of psychology blended into the character development throughout, throughout the book. And I'm, the one I was trying to find was Braiding Sweetgrass. That's my neighborhood book club book for September, so it's long, I hear, which is always a challenge for me, so I've got to spend the summer reading Braiding Sweetgrass. And my sister just recommended to me, maybe you should talk to someone about it. Don't know, we'll see. Moving to the cabinet, because have we all had our turn? We have, haven't we? Go ahead, you can start. Julia?
Oh, I'm, I don't, I haven't put together a reading list yet for the summer.
There's time, there's the first.
However, I have been reading, I have been reading Why Are All the Black Kids Sitting Reading, or Sitting Together in the Cafeteria and other race issues, so I have been working on that for some time.
Good, thank you. Amy?
I'll echo Aston, we're, as a cabinet finishing culturally responsive leadership from Dr. Khalifa, followed by a foot-tall stack of books from my man Cato classroom, so there's no shortage.
Well, I usually read books on my Kindle, so I have downloaded right now Dare to Lead and I, by Brené Brown, and I want to get The Hate U Give. I've heard a lot about that. And then I was just at a garage sale a couple weeks ago, and I got two Barbara Kingsolver books. Don't ask me the names of them, I can't remember, but I, I'm kind of excited to actually read an actual book.
My book club is reading The Immortal Life of Henrietta Lacks, which I've been wanting to read forever, and it's really good. And we are going to read The Book of Joy. It's the Dalai Lama and Desmond Turey, we thought we'd just have a little lighter for the summer.
Okay. Once I learn how to work out each one. So culturally responsive school leadership, that we just went through a great professional world and section. And I also picked one of the books from, that was mentioned by Joe Pollak at the retirement ceremony, The Art of Happiness by the Dalai Lama.
Karen, thanks for that tradition and keeping it going. Anybody else have any communication and transmittal? All right, everybody have a great summer. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Ann. Is there a second? Seconded by Mary. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. I have seven, nine, twelve. We are adjourned, I have seven, nine, twelve.